Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order at 6:31. Steve, will you please call the roll? President?
Yes.
Here. And our best to the mayor. Tonight, I will ask Jordan Wu to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please all stand with your right hand over your beautiful heart, face the flag, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all.
Thank you. So, we have a recognition tonight. Is he here?
So, he, there was a little bit of confusion, so he will be, not be with us this evening because of coming in. But just for the record, he'll be, on Friday, we'll be having a reception to recognize Bill Tarrant in these chambers here, and I believe it's at 11:00 to 1:00. So, if anyone's interested to come by, and we'll have a number of presentations to give him at that point, but due to traffic and things like that, he's not going to be able to make it this evening.
Okay, perfect. So, Steve, do you still want to read a recognition?
Yeah, I can do that. Well, basically, what we want to do is, we're going to recognize Bill Tarrant is retired. He's, most of you know him as our building official. He's been here 22 years, so he's been out and probably knows most of the houses in Villa Park, has done a tremendous job of representing the city and trying to do, keep us up to code and all the things. He's also served as our code enforcement officer for probably the last 10 to 15 years. And Bill is a true professional, who I can honestly say, having been myself doing this for a long time, he's one of the best I've ever worked with, and I get, a dedicated true professional who I could reach 24/7. And I know we could count on him to represent the city well and to do his job with the utmost professionalism. So, I, unfortunately, he's not here to get the reception, to get the, we've got a number of recognitions for him, so on Friday, we'll go ahead and give those. But I know we have something from Congresswoman Young Kim. I know that there are a couple others, and I'll defer to you as, if they want to go ahead and just read them or leave them with us, or however they want to do it.
Yes, if you could, please come up to make your presentation and then hand the certificate to our city manager. So first, our representative from Assemblyman Philip Chen's office.
My name is Newton Vieng Koo. Oh, there we go. You guys can hear me now? Cool, cool, cool. My name is Newton Vieng Koo. I'm a field representative here on behalf of Assemblymember Philip Chen, and we just want to say it's an incredible honor to be here tonight to, to celebrate and recognize Mr. Bill Tarrant for 22 years of service as the building official. The city of Villa Park is truly, it's beautiful, it's its own little, small but mighty town, and without citizens like Mr. Tarrant, this wouldn't exist. So, we're just incredibly proud to be here, incredibly proud to serve and represent this community as well. Thank you, guys.
Wonderful. Please thank the Assemblymen for us. Next, we have Pat Buttriss from Chairman of the Orange County Board of Supervisor, Don Wagner's office.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that. Really, on behalf of Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner, and this is Don's District III, and we're very proud to be part of this lovely district. This is for Bill. He's done a wonderful, wonderful job in this city for many years, 22 of them. We're very proud of what he did. I worked with him a couple of times when I was representing Southern California Edison, so I know he's a great person to work with. And I'm sorry, he's not here to hear all this, but he can play it, right? It's recorded. We can play it. Anyway, I will say, truthfully, Bill was one of those hidden jewels that is Villa Park. He has made and helped to make the city what it is, and we're all very, very proud of him and the city of Villa Park. So again, on behalf of Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Pat. If you can please thank Supervisor Wagner for us. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move on to the report from the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Looks like we'll be, looks like we'll be in good hands.
I brought this for Bill, but he didn't show up. You guys can go.
There's not too many guys named Todd we're searching for.
All right, well, my report is actually going to be very short, so I can get to other things. Very, very good month in Villa Park. We only had one, like, real crime against property, and again, it was a thing I've been harping about for a long time, is limit the opportunities. E-bikes left in the open garage, unattended. Like I said, I don't, nobody deserves to be a victim, but you have to limit the opportunities, okay? We did have one, I guess you would call it a burglary in the town center here, the Bagel Me, the nail salon. We had a, the window smashed there. So this event actually started in our sister city, Yorba Linda, where Dunkin' Donuts got burglarized, and then they made their way over here. And they thought they were going to get away free and clear until one of my hard chargers in the back row here saw this particular vehicle with a rag covering its plate. Didn't look right, okay? Especially at 3:30 in the morning, on a Monday morning. We knew it wasn't Robbie Pitts walking, going through the parking lot, all right? So the little hairs on the back of her neck gets going, right? And she starts following it, and this bad boy takes off. And if Mr. Mayor was here, he could tell you how dangerous pursuits are and how important it is to operate safely, not only for our safety, the safety of the suspect, but for the safety of the public. So, and what Deputy Milbury did was chase this vehicle very safely, very tactfully, getting in all her resources, so we could chase this vehicle all the way into Norwalk. They park off of Onrep. All our resources are getting there. Three guys jump out of this car, and they go into a mobile home park that we have no familiarity with, right? It'd be like having LA come down, "Hey, hey, go find somebody in Villa Park." So, but all the resources were in place. We had the CHP in place. I was going to give a shout out to the mayor, but he's not here. But we had LSO in place. We had other, other resources in place. Three suspects all taken into custody in this mobile home park, tied to the burglar here, tied to the burglary in Yorba Linda, and God knows what else we'll tie them to, because behind the scenes, we'll do some more work on them. But it wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for the great work, not only of Deputy Milbury, but all of these guys. This is, this is the crew that works when everybody else here is sleeping, including myself.
Yeah. Can you have the...
I gotta turn around.
Can you have the deputy give a wave?
Brianna.
Yes, thank you.
So, and I said, this, this is why the city of Villa Park and unincorporated North County is so safe. Just alone, just in this year-to-date alone, they've taken over 20 drunk drivers off the road. Deputy Sanders? He's killing it. He's taking drunk drivers off the road on a nightly basis. Eight of them in Villa Park alone. Believe it or not, bad people pass through here, and this is the crew that is making sure Villa Park stays safe. So, I have nothing but good things to say about them. I'm super proud of them, I'm super proud of all of them. I love these guys, and they're the reason I look so good. It's not just the mustache. Gladly open to any questions. Well, do you want me to announce our e-bike thing, or do you want to do that later?
We don't talk about that one later.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
No, just thank you. You guys are amazing, and we're very, very fortunate to have you. So, thank you.
Councilman Pitts?
You know, month after month, we hear a very small or no crime report coming out of, you know, from you, and it's the dedication of all these people back here, and we thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, no, thank you so much for all you do, and we so sincerely appreciate all of your efforts. We really do. Thank you so much.
So, real quickly, I wanted to ask, we're very fortunate. I mean, Captain Patel is very modest, but if you guys call me, and I know you do, and say, "Hey, the helicopter's out at 10 o'clock at night. What's going on?" The other night, you called me and said you needed a response on a call-in. I called him, and within five minutes, we had a deputy there. So, we do need to thank Captain Patel for his leadership. It's not just the guys, but it's also the way that they're led. So, I do want to make sure that he doesn't get away from the podium without at least a little bit of a congratulations and a pat on the back.
Yes.
Have a safe night, guys.
And then, I believe that you're not going to get away because Neighborhood Watch wants to give you a recognition.
Yes, we have Wayne and Mary Sizelle from Neighborhood Watch for a presentation. Or maybe just Mary Sizelle.
Where's the big daddy? Get over here.
We had a very successful National Night Out here on August 6th, and we want to thank particularly our OCSD deputies, equipment, everyone who helped, the equipment and firefighters that were here, the city of Villa Park, especially Mike Knowles for setup, and Steve Franks for coordination, and also the Villa Park community organizations and town center merchants for their participation in the evening. There was a nice turnout of residents and families, some young children, some of them new to Villa Park, a fun way to meet our deputies and get acquainted with our fine city. We obtained several new participants for Neighborhood Watch, and we also distributed educational material provided by the Federal Trade Commission for scams, fraud, internet safety for all ages. The social media site Nextdoor canceled our Villa Park Neighborhood Watch account several years ago, so this is an excellent way for us to reach the community at large and get this information out to our residents. Each year, the goal of National Night Out is to bring community members of all ages together to celebrate the outstanding safety record of Villa Park and to thank those who make it possible, especially by promoting respect and appreciation for our sheriff's department and law enforcement representatives among the children and the young people who attend National Night Out. With that goal in mind, we encourage them to sign this thank you poster for the, showing their, for showing their appreciation for our deputies here in our small city. So it's our privilege to present this symbol of Villa Park's appreciation, complete with the children's drawings, names, sketches, to the Orange County Sheriff's Department for appreciation for its dedicated and outstanding service to the residents of the city of Villa Park. Thank you.
I guess I need to get a picture, right? All right.
Get it here, guys. It's an order.
Not incorrect. I think I said inspector. Is it official?
He's everything. He's one of three.
Okay, I said...
He's inspector, code enforcement officer, and he's building official.
Should I say official?
That's fine.
Because I can change it.
This is fine.
Okay.
We also want to encourage all of the residents in Villa Park who are not already a part of the Villa Park Neighborhood Watch Network to agree to do so. It's very simple, very easy, and it makes all the difference in the world in helping our sheriff's deputies. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we also want to thank Wayne and Mary Sizelle for heading up Neighborhood Watch all these years. Your efforts are truly appreciated. So, round of applause. Thank you. So now we move on to the Orange County Fire Authority.
That's a tough one to follow tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Great to be here with you tonight. Since our last meeting on July 23rd, OCFA, we've had 129 units dispatched to 48 incidents in the city of Villa Park. September is National, National Disaster Preparedness Month, and we encourage you to be prepared for the unexpected and take steps now to protect your family and home before the next earthquake, wildfire, pandemic, or disaster. Just a good time for families to go home. I'm sure most families have a plan or have a kit. If you don't, certainly start one. Again, ocfa.org is a great place to start for resources for that, but really, we're talking about making a disaster, making a family disaster plan, a meeting place. Another one is to visit alertoc.com to get up-to-date information sent to your, to your smartphone. Create emergency supply kits. We're asking everybody to be prepared for at least three days with food and water, along with some other considerations. Prepare your home, bolt or brace a major appliances, heavy furniture, electronics, and overhead fixtures. And then, lastly, on that note, utilize 211. A lot of people don't, aren't familiar with 211. There's 211oc.org is the website, but 211 is a great resource for non-emergency services that they're available to folks in the county, various services. And lastly, but certainly not least, our fire hawks are now in service. You know, they're fully capable of responding to vegetation fires, drop water. The training continues in the rescue, on the rescue side with, with the academy that's going on, but we had a press release last week at Irvine Park. That was a success. If you caught that on social media, if not, you can go to our website and see that. But both copters, one and two, are both available to start dropping waters and fires, so you'll see those in the area as we go through the season. With that, I've seen my report, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Real quick, I wanted to say that I know I praise Captain Patel, but also Scott. It's very interesting, because if there's an incident, I always sort of flip a coin to see who will be calling me first, either the captain or Scott. At all hours, they're, I'm, I'm probably difficult to work with, my wife says, because I'm up all the time. But these two guys are more alert than I am, and at 3:30, 4:00, whatever time of their day, they both get back to me. And we're just very fortunate, both on the fire authority side and the sheriff's side. So, it's a hand in hand, and they work together extremely well. So we also need to give the same kind of praise to, to the fire authority, because they're extremely responsive, and Scott, Captain, the two of them are just incredible, so I just didn't want you to walk away, being he got more praise than you did.
Not at all, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If it makes you feel any better, my wife says I'm hard to work with, too.
Oh, real quick, does anyone from council have any questions? Nope? Okay, thank you so much. And at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone that is present or wrote in from the public that would like to comment?
Yes, we have one, Terry Vernon.
Kind of happy all your friends left. It was a little intimidating. All righty. So, good evening, city council. My name is Terry Vernon. I reside on Orange Grove Circle. I am the current president of the Villa Park Women's League. Women's League is a special organization that believes in the power of friendship and community. We have some very exciting activities on our calendar this year, starting with our 55th anniversary. We will be celebrating that on September 30th at Sarah Villa, Sarah Villa Middle School, which is the exact day and location of the first meeting 55 years ago, so that's pretty special. We're going to be stepping back in time to celebrate the summer of '69 and honoring our past 54 presidents. Sherry Zakowitz, by the way, who is still with us, was our first president and will be joining us that evening, so it's kind of exciting. One of the, one of the charities, some of the things that I like to do, that I have some passions about, is that I'm focusing my presidency on supporting charities and community beautification. One of the charities that we will be supporting for the month of September is Operation Be Kind, supporting those that are experiencing breast cancer and going through treatment. We will be collecting items for 60 care bags that will be donated to local cancer centers within Orange County. So these are, this is an example of what our care bags look like, and in partnering with some of our clubs and organizations here within the Women's League, in fact, one of our stitchery ladies is here this evening, the Stitchery Club of the Women's League is putting together 60 of these beanies that we will be including in the care bags. So the care bags will be assembled the first week of October, and then will be distributed, probably the second week of October, to the cancer centers. Community beautification is another passion of mine. We've already met with our city manager, and to identify ways that the Women's League can partner and support the city, I have a committee that's already working to come up with those ideas that the Women's League can do to make an imprint on our city. In addition to our giving campaign and beautification, Women's League is a social organization, and that's what we have been founded on. We have well over 22 activities that happen on a monthly basis, with about 260 members, not all attending, but we have a good portion of people that attend those 22 events. We have dinner clubs, wine groups, book clubs, bridge, pedal pushals, pedal pushers, pickleball, walking groups, stitchery, Bible studies, mom and tots, the list goes on. And I was thinking, and I'm not sure if we've tried it yet, but we need a napping club after all of this. Definitely. We're currently in our annual membership campaign. We welcome new and returning members by visiting our website, villaparkwomen'sleague.org. They can reach out to me, they can reach out to our membership chair, Risa Scott. You could find us around town anywhere. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the Women's League.
Thank you so much, Terry.
We also have Alexander Tran.
Mayor Protem Jones, city manager Steve Franks, and member of the, members of the Villa Park City Council. My name's Alexander Tran. I am a senior at Villa Park High School, and I currently serve as student board member for the Orange Unified School District, representing Villa Park High School. One of the fiduciary duties that I have as a student board member is to represent Villa Park High School at the OUSD board meetings, and also provide a school report of the ongoing student activities at Villa Park High School. My colleagues at Al Medina High School and Orange High School provide school reports to the city council meetings with the city of Orange, and I believe it would be, it would be neat, and as a matter of courtesy for the residents of Villa Park, if Villa Park High School would do the same. First and foremost, I'd just like to speak on what the, on some of the student activities that we're doing at Villa Park High School and what's going on on campus. Two weeks ago, we had registration, registration bringing in both incoming seniors, juniors, and sophomores, as well as new freshmen. I believe that Councilwoman Miles and Councilwoman Wu were there, present with the PFSO, and I really would like to extend my greatest gratitudes for their awesome volunteerism. Also on during student registration, my apologies, clubs and athletic organizations had the opportunity to bring in new athletes and new, new members just as well. On top of that, we also had freshman orientation, where new freshmen, around numbering the class around 500 students, came by and really got used to the Villa Park High School's campus. So the ASP were also responsible for giving tours to the students, and the administration was too responsible for providing information for upcoming freshman parents. On top of that, Villa Park High School also had a teacher preparation day, where local OUSD teachers, I believe Villa Park Elementary, Sarah Villa, and Serrano came by to Villa Park High School's campus to give a guide on what's, what is to be expected for the upcoming school year. I believe also trustees Yamisaki and Pelley were present as well. And now, in regards to athletics, which I think is fun for all of us, we also have a football game against our rival, Orange High School, on August 30th at Fred Kelly Stadium. And not to mention, we also have a back-to-school night, September 4th, 5:30 PM, and we strongly encourage the community, the Villa Park community, to attend as well. I know this is kind of interesting for myself, and I assure you for the rest of the Villa Park community, we have a, Villa Park High School is currently undergoing massive renovations on campus. The Measure S2 face building is expected to be constructed, my apologies, completed in November. It is expected that our English and math classes will be relocated to that building. On top of that, we will be, we also are undergoing massive renovations with the gym. I believe we're implementing a new HVAC system and undergoing internal renovations, including a new bleachers and new flooring. And on top of that, and finally, we're also installing a new elevator on the back of the facade, on the facade of the building, which is aimed towards the quad. That's all I have to say about what's going on at Villa Park High School. I am looking forward to attending Villa Park City Council meetings in the future and providing school ports, school reports, my apologies. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you so much. Now, was that it?
That's it.
Okay. Now we will move into our agenda's public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinance and ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The, this is the monthly item we have to allow us to have efficient and expeditious meetings, so with that, we'd recommend approval.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Pitt seconded. Please vote.
Passes by a 4-0, 4-0 vote with Mayor Rosini absent.
Great. Our next hearing is the Walls and Fences Code Amendment Second Reading. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is the second reading of the Walls and Fences, which we discussed last meeting. The council had, we made one change, I believe, Justin, and that one change, I'll let him go specifically, but should the council approve it today, this ordinance would then become effective 30 days from adoption, after adoption this evening. So, Justin can answer specific questions, but why don't you identify the one change that was made at the direction of the council last meeting?
Yes, the one change that was made after the last meeting was related to the lighting fixtures above walls and fences, so that will now be allowed in the 20-foot front yard setback only unless a variance is applied for and approved.
So we'd ask for approval or action by the council this evening.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Nope. Is there anyone to speak on this?
No.
Okay. Is there any further discussion regarding this item? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilman Wu moved it, and Councilman Pitt seconded. Please vote.
Passes by a 4-0 vote. Again, this will go into effect 30 days from adoption today, so they'll be codified in our ordinances.
Wonderful. Our next hearing is variance number 2024-4. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. I will let, this is a variance for 9701 Cannon Street. Justin, why don't you walk us through it?
Yes, good evening, members of the council. Before you use variance 2024-04, the application involves 9701 Cannon Street, which is currently improved with a two-story residence, a detached accessory structure, and a pool. The lot is 26,625 square feet and is located in the E4 zoning district. The property owner is Ben Levine, and the applicant is Craig Fry and Associates. The focus of the application is an already-built block wall and sliding driveway gate within the front yard setback. Pursuant to Section 23-6.11 of the Villa Park Municipal Code, all walls and fences must adhere to a 42-inch height limitation within the front 20 feet of any property. The already-constructed wall is six feet tall at the lowest point and rises to 10 feet 11 inches at the highest point due to the difference in grade. The wall exceeds the 42-inch height limitation by 7 feet 5 inches at the highest point. I will also mention that the subject property has a lean placed against it from the city due to numerous code violations. The unpermitted wall and sliding driveway gate are one of those code violations. The applicant justifies the construction of the wall and the application of the variance fronting Cannon Street, a busy four-lane road with significant noise, privacy, and safety concerns, by stating that the wall mitigates those concerns and that adhering to a 42-inch height limitation would deprive them of certain privileges enjoyed by other property owners. Generally, variances are considered for approval when the property in question possesses inherent physical characteristics and constraints, such as irregular lot shapes, difficult topography, or easements. After reviewing the city municipal code, the neighborhood impacts and the submitted plans, city staff recommends denial of the variance as the property is regularly shaped and possesses ample front yard space to construct the wall and sliding driveway gate within the required setbacks. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, public hearing notices for this item were mailed at least 10 days prior to this hearing and were also published in the Orange City News. To date, city staff have received four letters in support of the variance and one letter in opposition. To date, city staff have received four letters in support of the variance and one letter in opposition. With that, I will conclude my staff report and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Justin. Aside from this variance, are there other violations that, A, the homeowner knows about and that have been documented by the city to the applicant?
Yes, the city has sent a letter containing those code violations, which also contains a clause allowing the city to add additional code violations in the event that some may be unnoticed by the city at this time.
The second question is, did the applicant ever explain? I understand that the reason that they built the wall, I understand the reason why they built the wall. I don't blame them for building a tall wall. It's a very busy street. But did the applicant ever explain why he did not come and present his case to the council to apply for a variance? To say that he needed it because of the busy street?
No, he did not.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions for staff?
Justin, what kind of code violations are they?
There are a number of violations we can document, and if, you know, Justin has a list. Several of, there's a structure on the site that has not been, that's never permitted. So work was done without permits, basically. That's where a lot of it boils down to. Or plans were not submitted with it, with things in there that were built. So, along those lines. And that's been documented, I believe, in a letter to him. When was the letter sent?
The letter was sent June 5th of this year.
Is the homeowner here? Would you like to say anything?
Well, why don't we finish questions of staff, if you don't mind? Do you have anything further? I do have a question. There are no measurements on the plans that we received as far as how far away from Cannon this driveway gate is. Do you have a measurement on that?
Based on staff calculations, the wall itself is about 12 feet, and the driveway gate is about five or so feet behind the front property line. And then there is also an additional bridle trail easement in front of that, which is about five feet wide per city track maps.
So how far is it off of that trail?
About 12 feet.
Okay. And how far does it need to be off of that trail?
20 feet.
20 feet. Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Councilman Wu?
How tall is the gate?
I don't believe that the specifications of that were on the plans. I believe it's a little over six feet tall.
So the gate is not as same height as the wall?
It is not the same height. It's a little bit different.
Another one?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilman Pitts?
I guess what's puzzling is, what did we see in terms of prints, plans? And what did we approve? And are all these things done after the fact, after you approved the original set? Or what was?
The applicant submitted architectural, engineering, and building plans for various aspects of the property improvements. And the code violations were not either listed on the plans or they were constructed at a later date without permit and approval. So they were not listed or approved on the original stamped plans.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions for staff? Councilman Wu?
Sorry, Justin. When did the city notice all these violations? You mentioned the letter was sent in June of this year. Since you mentioned all the violations were not part of the cemental of the plan, when did the city realize all these violations?
As it pertains to, it's been an ongoing process with various departments. But I believe the city first was made aware of some of the issues several years ago pertaining to the accessory structure.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, and do we have anyone to speak at this hearing?
I believe Craig Fry and Matthew Mercotti, I believe, are here to speak, if needed, I guess they said.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I apologize for my sunglasses here. My regular glasses met an untimely end right before we came in, but I do need them to see. So I think, thank you so much, Justin, for explaining all the facts of the case. We've been working closely with Justin. Craig and I have a firm that handles precisely this. Yes, you've seen probably numerous code enforcement violations this week, this year, this month. It came to us as precisely this, code enforcement violation. We have as-bills, and we have no permits for them. And so, you know, we've handled probably hundreds of these things and typically worked with the city. Some of the items that the owners put up will require building and safety approval. Some of the items will need to go back to planning, and that's what we've come through with this. And so when speaking with Justin, he outlined kind of a path forward for each of these items. The main three code enforcement violations that we're aware of, of course, the fence. The remedy for the fence, as Justin has explained to us through this process, is a variance. He had us construct findings. He had us come to the presentation, although I think the last conversation, he said it maybe wasn't important that we show up. But we did think it maybe is important that we show up to explain the side of this case. We need some path forward, certainly raising the wall. We can destroy the wall, tear it down, push it back 12 feet. But really, I think the owner would turn around and file for this entitlement again. They would, they still need the security of the fence. This is a busy street. We're worried about car intrusions. We're worried about children playing in the front yard. This is a very safe area. Less of a concern is crime, except for, you know, people passing through who might want to, you know, come off a quick busy street and have a break-in. And so, you know, we don't want to be punished for not seeking approval prior, although we do understand that is absolutely not the normal course of business. But, you know, if this were denied today, we would probably have to turn around and refile, repay our fees, you know, probably destroy the wall and then ask for it to be put up in the exact same spot. And separate from this, other code enforcement violations, of course, we have like a recreation area. This is like maybe a sports court, requires a conditional use permit. This was explained also by Justin. The conditional use permit was the process to get this approved. Obviously, it's normally done ahead of time. This is now after the fact. And the owner decided not to kind of push it too far and decided instead just to tear that down and no longer have that as part of the building. And then the third item is we have kind of a gym. It's a sports center. That needs to go through a separate process. This is another building that needs to be permitted. Looking forward to working with the planning department. I mean, this is a full building. Of course, it could be torn down, applied for, and rebuilt, but we're really just asking, you know, for some path forward through planning department, through council, to not really make a bigger mess than has already been created on this item.
Council members, thank you. My name's Craig Fry, and I'm representing the owner. Again, we came on relatively recently. The owner was unaware at the time of what the process was. We're here to help him through that process and our commitment is to work with the city to get this done. I think you know the street. I've driven by the street. I've grown up in Orange County, so I know the area very well. But it is a busy street. He was concerned with the safety of his family and his kids. Was he maybe a little naive in how he did it? The answer is yes. But we're here to work with Justin and his team in the city in order to get it into compliance and do whatever we need. We do have plans. We can show you that we're done. Our commitment is to make sure that it's a safe. And if you drive, and I know all of you have driven up this street, there are block walls in the area, there are retaining walls in the area. And it's not an eyesore. It's something that he felt that was necessary for his kids and his family to be safe. He's been a longtime resident here, and he's committed to doing the right thing. With that, I'd like to let him come up and talk and let you tell me about his side.
I have a question for the two gentlemen. Hi. Thank you for coming. I just want to understand the relationship that you are representing the owner. So are you lawyers?
No, no. I used to be the fire chief in LA. And when I retired, I started a company helping people get through the city processes, getting their permits, getting their entitlements.
So you're a consultant?
Yes.
Okay. That's, thank you. I want, and same goes for you?
Yes, I work for Craig. We did the work on the findings. We worked with Justin. A lot of this stuff gets extremely complicated. Many sections of code at work here.
Understood.
It looked like you even had an update to your fences and walls go directly before this.
Right.
And that's what we were reading.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify if this was legal representation or is this a hired consultant? Okay, thank you.
Hi, thanks for your time. I just wanted to provide a little bit of an explanation.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm Benjamin Levine. Yeah, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification. I know it sounds overwhelming when we're talking about not having permits and a wall that just goes up. So I think just without getting lost in the weeds, Justin made a comment that the city's been aware of this wall for about three years. And during its construction, Bill Tarran and Akram had me come down to the office. And they said, hey, it looks like the wall that your building's pretty tall. And I said, well, the code states that the wall is allowed to be 42 inches above finished grade. And we took that interpretation, and the contractor that built the wall took that interpretation as the finished grade of the house. And the wall is actually less than 42 inches from finished grade. And so at that time, Akram had said he was going to check with the city attorney and get back to me. And three years passed. So, you know, I understand that this is an issue now, and we're trying to deal with it. There's also, I mean, it's important to note, too, that when I bought this property, I was actually recorded improperly with the city of Villa Park. And the city of Villa Park originally actually provided me an address on Crestview, and that was going to be the back of my house. And so there was significant costs that I incurred in order to change the layout, the engineering of the property because it was mislabeled. And I didn't have access from Crestview like the city had thought, or, you know, our real estate agents. It was just recorded improperly. It was an easterly designation versus a westerly. But because of that incurred, you know, significant changes. Obviously, we're here to talk about the wall, but it's also important to know about the unpermitted building, the gymnasium building. I did actually pay for permits, and it's been about three years with no response on that, too. So we did submit drawings, and we did pay for that, and Bill sent a copy of that. I forwarded that to Justin. We're just trying to do the right thing at this point. My mom was in the process of, trying to get her out of the hospital. She was dying. Was trying to bring her home, and I think Bill, you know, everybody spoke very highly of Bill. He's great to work with. I think he afforded me some privileges to help me get this done at the time, you know, trying to get my mom out of the hospital. So, I mean, that's kind of, I'm not here just to make excuses. Like I said, I've hired the people to get through this. It's definitely a privacy issue. Again, we thought we were building it to code, and we thought when three years went by without any comment that it had been accepted. You know, we paid our fees. I've hired people to make this presentation. We're trying to fix all the issues so we can put this behind us, but we definitely need to start somewhere. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Maybe if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Am I correct? Because I've been on council a while. Didn't you come or a representative come before council to do something with your driveway or property line or something a long time ago?
Yes, so my neighbor Chase has, Chase Khan, he lives on Crestview. He's a friend of mine. Just being neighbors, we've become friends. So when Chase first moved in, I was supposed to have access from Crestview. And on the title report that was filed and recorded was incorrect. I was trying to gain access for a shared driveway to come from Crestview, and that seems to have been denied. But I think it's also very important to understand, though, as well, that, you know, we're not pointing the finger at anybody, but like when I bought the house, we thought we had this. And I think a lot of these issues don't exist if they, you know, if it wasn't recorded improperly. And I think, you know, with working with Bill, I think like we've been, you know, we've been very helpful to each other in avoiding any kind of like issues because of that. And, you know, I think I've been pretty easygoing with adjusting our site plan, hiring. I mean, we spent $600,000 on retaining and soil removal to adjust to the not having access there. So...
So my question is, so I thought the name sounded familiar. Maybe it was because, you know, you had signed, both you and your neighbor had signed off, or there was some agreement or something. But so I have some concerns when I believe your representative said that you didn't understand the process of having to come to the city. So I guess for me, I'm having trouble believing that, knowing that, as you mentioned, the process with your neighbor before, it entailed coming to the city.
Well, I think that was maybe misunderstood.
For a variance for your home, but, you know, there's a lot of times where people will do something, and they truly didn't know, right? It's they just moved here. I think we had one across from the high school with a fence, maybe. But, you know, for me, when somebody says, you know, well, I didn't understand the process, I can be reasonable, and I can say, well, maybe they did, maybe they didn't. Let's see what happens. So what I want to find out also is, you just stated that it's been three years, and you had no communication about the wall or any kind of violation. So, Justin or Steve, is that an accurate statement? Is there no communication? There's no emails? There's no phone calls? There's no documentation at all that we contacted or reached out to the homeowner to say, hey, this is a problem, or, you know, come for a variance? Well, I want to ask, I want to ask staff, because the statement was made that you didn't know anything for three years.
That's absolutely correct. There was no emails, phone calls, aside from the meeting that I spoke to three years ago when the wall was being constructed. I came in and we expressed the 42 inches from finished grade was being interpreted from the garage level pad, to which it is less than 42 inches. And Bill Tarran and Akram at the time, he was the city engineer, he said he was going to check with the city attorney and get back to me. And honestly...
I understand. You're saying that the city did not contact you after that point, and I'm asking the city, did we contact him after that point?
Our engineer and I just reviewed a letter from 2022 that was sent to the applicant with code violations on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, Ms. Miles, I think the comment that Craig had made was, I wasn't familiar with how to file a variance. And so I just never had to file a variance before. I didn't understand the paperwork. And I felt it best that I hire professionals so that when we present, you know, our reason for needing the wall, it came across as the most professional. And, you know, there's, every single house on Cannon has a wall over 42 inches, every single one. There isn't a single exception that doesn't have a wall over that. So I wanted to try to present that presentation in the most professional manner, and that's...
Well, and I appreciate you, I totally appreciate, and I'm sure it's very frustrating, but I have, you know, a variance in and of itself is an exception to the rule. So if you see homes that have walls that are taller or whatnot, we hope the process is that they have come to the city and asked for a variance, and the council has approved or denied that said variance, and either they are allowed to keep it at that height or not. So the variance is asking for an exception, that you would have an exception, but somebody else would not. So I know that, like I was just saying, for me individually, I can't speak for the rest of council members. If somebody truly has an issue where they just didn't know, you know, yeah, you kind of do the ask for forgiveness instead of permission. But your house project had architects, your house project had designers. It's a beautiful home. So it's not just you decided to modify a wall. It was all part of your entire design of your home. So for me, it's hard when somebody says they just didn't know that they had to get a variance. When, for me personally, if you had come to me, because I've been on council for a while, and said, hey, it's a busy street, I have kids, I really, I would most likely have said, yeah, I totally agree with you. It's hard for me to go back and say, well, it's okay. You just ignored everything. So, you know, that sets a really bad precedent. Those are just my comments. I can't, I don't speak for anyone else.
If I can just address that comment, because I understand your point, but it's important to understand that the code states 42 inches from finished grade. And while this was being built, we came and I spoke directly with Akram, and he specifically said if there was going to be an issue, that they would notify. And there was no notification. So we were proactive about having the conversation, and if the code still states 42 inches. I think the issue that we're having now is it's being interpreted as the adjacentmost point, which is the sidewalk that's next to it. So that's the reason. It's not about building it and asking for forgiveness later. It's we honestly thought when we were building it that we were building it to code. And it wasn't just me as Ben Levine building the wall. It was the wall builder who looked at the city code, felt that since it was within the 42 inches of finished grade, that it doesn't require an additional permit. And that's how we ended up here. And I apologize for the fact that it's being built, and I wish I could go back in time and understand that they were going to measure it from adjacent point. Unfortunately, I can't. Unfortunately, I can't, and I'm sorry about that. And I know that Justin just said that the something was sent in 2022, but we, I, I don't know if it was mailed. We haven't received it at all since then. And Bill has been on property, actually, between 2022 and now as well, and that didn't come up either. So I'm reacting as fast as possible. We were notified this about in June. I'm reacting quickly. We're, we're going to be addressing the gymnasium building next. We wanted to get through this. And I, I mean, I promised to, to be working through this to get everything up, up to code.
Just if I could, for the record, on May 2nd, at the request of Bill Terran as building official, we placed a lien against the home due to, due to perceived or identified code violations. So that was May 2nd of 2024, and Bill had notified him in advance of those, under, as Bill, per Bill. I'm not, I'm just going to speak.
There was no notification of any lien, and there's a service requirement involved with that. So when a lien is placed on a home, you're supposed to be given a service notice. And I haven't, I did not receive a service notice. It wasn't until I took a financing on the house, the, the, the home was owned, and we took a financing on the house. It wasn't until late in June that we became even aware of the lien. So you can only find a lien on your house if you do a lien search. So I had no reason to think that there would be a lien because it wasn't notified. There was no email saying we have an intent to lien. There was no, there was no letters sent, no, I wasn't provided any information to know that a lien was coming. If I would have known, then I would have been in the city right away to see how we could avoid that. So I mean, I think that's another thing, you know, is we have to look at, like, was it serviced properly? And regardless, we're just trying to get it right at this point. We're not trying to challenge anybody. We're just trying to move forward. But it, I just want the city to understand that there's an explanation for, you know, how this, how this kind of came to the point we're at right now.
Well, and really quick, if I can hop in, because I did have a question about the lien, because it's a process to file a lien.
Yes.
So were they served with the lien?
We, I, we went through the process. We notified the recorder. It's recorded with the, we file it with the recorder, and it's taken care of at that point. So we followed it at that point. We follow the procedure as we know it.
But the person that the lien is going against by law has to be notified. Just like with the lawsuit, if you're serving someone with a lawsuit, they have to be notified. And there was no letters sent. There's no, there's no letters put on the door. Bill has my tech, he, Bill texted me. He could have called me at any point in time. Again, I'm not here to argue that anybody's wrong or anybody, I'm not, I'm not looking to pick a fight with the city. I'm looking to give, you know, we built the building to code. I'm very, I'm very proud with how we built it. It's built very, you know, a lot of quality. I need to prove that to the city. I understand that. That's going to be, that Craig's office is going to be putting together the ASB builds. We'll, we'll open up the detached gymnasium wherever we need to, to show the city that it's to code, and we'll deal with that. This is, today is about the wall, and, and, you know, next will be that.
Yes.
I was not served anything.
Okay, and we have a couple more comments from our council people. Councilman, oh, Todd?
Yeah, so a lien is an acknowledgement of something happening on property. It's not like a lawsuit where you have a process server and you're officially served, or something of that nature. So it's my understanding, the city followed all the proper noticing requirements, and you would get notice through the recordation, which is constructive notice. But I agree, the lien isn't really at issue here. It's the wall. So I'll give you that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying.
Just so people know, we just don't randomly lien people's houses, but there's a process.
Right, but you, I would say that normally the, the landowner would be notified that a lien was placed on their property. And in this instance, I was not.
Haven't you seen those commercials late at night with that guy who used to be criminal saying how easy it is to, no, you don't give notice in those types of situations?
Yeah, but.
That was a horrible analogy, by the way.
With a good relationship, though, with Bill Terran, which I've had with him for years. And like I said, he helped me out with, you know, I sent him pictures as we were constructing the guest house. He came over and he saw while we were building the house. I had phone calls with him. It's just to me, the, the guest house has been there for three years. You know, my mother passed two and a half years ago, and she, she died in that guest house. So for all this to be coming on May 5th of 2024, it just seems, if the city had a true issue with anything, I just wish that this could have been addressed two years ago or during construction, or stop work notice. Just like when, when the wall was being constructed, there was an issue. And we came to the city, we spoke with Akram, we made justification that 42 inches was within the height that we were building. And, and he said he'd get back with us after checking, and, and nobody got back to us regarding the wall. So.
Okay, well, yes, if we can get some more questions from our council members. Councilman Pitts?
Couple of things. I'm really sorry that all of this had to come about, you know, for, for you and for us and everyone involved. However, I am challenged with this whole thing, because it's not just the wall we're dealing with. We're dealing with a multitude of violations. And something went awry in your process or your architect's process or something that let you down or someone down because nothing was approved. I mean, you have a whole bunch of violations out there. It's not just the wall. If you'd have come to us tonight and the wall was the only issue, it might be a whole different sentiment amongst the council members. But I can tell you, it sounds like, you know, you're taking advantage of the city by building things without permits. And I realize, you know, we can sit here and say, Bill did this and didn't do that, and so forth and so on. The bottom line is, there are violations out there. Your property was not built according to code. And now we're trying to, I understand these gentlemen are trying to resolve that for you. But the only way that's going to get resolved is for everybody to get in a room and sit down and work on it. But I can tell you right now, I'm not going to approve your, your variance tonight, just so you know.
I, I think, I think we're here because we're trying to be put on the right path. If the city's not going to even open a door to a path to fixing something, I just don't know what that says. You know, I'm not a contractor. I'm not a home builder. And me, you know, the one paying for it is relying on people to be doing things the right way. And yes, I think during the construction of this, and, you know, I built this during COVID, too. So I think the communication with the city, there was, there's definitely a breakdown, and did I get taken advantage of? Absolutely. It's not that Ben Levine is here trying to do things illegally in the City of Villa Park. I mean, I coach in the City of Villa Park. I volunteer in the City of Villa, you know. I, I have baseball practices at the house, at the batting cage, that I just take, took down because Justin asked me to. I ripped up the basketball court per his request. I took down the batting cage per his request. I filed this variance. I've hired the professionals to help me with doing this. I'm doing everything the city's asking me to. I'm paying them to put together the ASB builds for the, the guest house. I'm just asking for, to open the door to a path to fix things. I'm not asking to forgive all, you know, past sins. I, I just need a starting point. And, and I think like that's important to demonstrate, too, as, as council members, like if mistakes are made. And I'm, I'm coming here at your mercy, asking to, to move forward this and, and make this right by your cause. But denying the variance is, to me, would, when every single house on my street has a wall taller than mine, way taller than mine, and I'm the only one with front entry to Cannon, right? So I'm the only person that enters directly on Cannon on the whole street. What does that say when, when I can't have the wall height that other people don't? It, it's, it's kind of contradictory, especially when the City of Villa Park said that that was going to be the back of my house when I bought the property, right? So I've made adjustments that instead of, and I think the city attorney would, would tell you, too, you know, like, that was a mistake by the City of Villa Park when they recorded it improperly.
The city doesn't record stuff on your, for title report purposes in that regard, so that, I don't even know what that means. So, and I'm not saying we did anything wrong, by the way. So I, I would say, Mayor Protam, if it's okay, I mean, we're, we're talking a lot about history and who said what. I mean, it's sort of a docudrama. The issue here is very simple. It's a legal issue. A variance is a legal thing. Is there special circumstances because of this property and its location and its shape that allows it to vary from the normal wall height? If you think it does, you're within your authority to grant a variance. If you do not think it does, you should adopt staff's recommended findings and say, no, it doesn't. As far as, you know, opening doors, paths, you know, this is a legal proceeding based upon evidence and findings. And that's what I always direct the council to do, and that's what they do. And that is your decision based upon the testimony that you hear this evening. That's the issue.
Yes.
And I appreciate you saying that, because I think we've clearly demonstrated, everybody's drove up and down Cannon. I've, I've witnessed five accidents right in front of my gate. I have three kids. If I can't protect my family on a busy street like that, I, I don't know what that says. If, if I'm the one that gets denied out of everybody that's on that street, I, I need to have a wall. I have to.
Yes, Councilman Wu, you have a couple of questions, and we need to kind of wrap this up a little bit.
I agree with our city attorney. This is, but one thing I, I feel is missed. You are here after the fact. You are not here to apply variance proactively. So this is, we're dealing with the after facts of the wall. And secondly, I understand you mentioned about Canyon Street, how all your neighbors' wall are taller than yours. Again, according to our ordinance, those homes, their walls are taller is because that is their backyard or side yard that allow to be taller. For your property is the front yard. We have our, as a city, we have the ordinance. And as you just heard, we just passed a new ordinance to allow certain streets in the city for the front yard to be six feet without applying any variance from this, 30 days from today. So my point is, again, we are dealing with the after facts that you are dealing with, that you are coming here. I sympathize all your personal trouble with mom. And, and also that property is on the busy street. It is hard for me to, dealing with this as an after fact. And especially that is an extremely tall wall that we are looking at as a front.
Pictures, if I can show you, because.
I, I drive, I drive through it every single day.
The wall on the inside's only this tall, just so you know.
I understand that part, but again, that is from the inside perspective, right? But from the outside perspective, it's this tall versus this tall. As outside, we drive through it. We don't see it from inside, because that's not our property. We see what we see. It's this tall. So again, it's all perspective. But regardless of perspective, we had to go by the code. So I, I actually would like our staff, you mentioned, according to the code, is the finished grade at 48 inches?
The code says that it's 42 inches from finished grade. The interpretation of the contractor that built that is that finished grade would refer to the finished grade of the house and the pad that you are building on. And when I came three years ago and I spoke with Akram, Akram understood that we were less than 42 inches from, and we still are. That wall is less than 42 inches from finished grade. It wasn't until three years later, and the new conversations with Justin, that they said that you are going to refer to the adjacent point. That's not what the code says. The code says finished grade. And if you guys wanted to mean adjacent point, then the code should say that. It doesn't say that. Which I, I think carries liability, right? If, if I'm thinking that I'm building it properly per code and that I do not need a permit, then I think they need to better establish what finished grade means, and it's, it's not in the code. And I've had attorneys read this up and down. I've had the associates read this up, up, up and down. To this day, I, I stand here, and I, I believe we built it to code. Now, it's changed to adjacent point.
I, I would like our city staff or attorney to define what he mentioned.
Yeah, well, first of all, everybody keeps talking about what Akram said. I have no idea what Akram said three years ago. I can't remember last week. But the issue of finished grade is generally from whatever point the structure is touching. That's the normally recognized concept. Under that analogy, if you're on a sloped lot, you have a house up here, and the wall can be X amount of feet from finished grade, you could build the wall of babble, hundreds of feet, right? That doesn't make any sense. So, that's my take.
And if I could ask staff, can you build a block wall without a permit? Is that permitted in the City of Villa Park?
The building code, Justin, do you know, it has to be over a certain amount of feet. You need a permit for a block wall.
I believe it's over three feet tall.
Yeah, I think so, because of the stability, because it can fall.
42 inches. It's 42 inches, three and a half feet.
Okay, so if it's over three feet, you needed a permit?
Three and a half feet above finished grade, correct?
The other issue is not just the finished grade, but it's also within the 20-foot yard, front yard setback.
Which, on my civil engineering plans that are approved for the, for the site, we had a different looking wall, but it was also within the first 20 feet. It's just, we had to modify the wall because we couldn't have double entry. We had to have a single point of entry. So it was modified, but when we submitted the civil engineering plans, we did call out for a wall up front. Now, we didn't define the height because that was yet to be determined, and it was modified to a single entrance. But, I mean, we have a C of O on the house. All the plans are approved on the house. And again, the wall's been there for three years.
Okay, we need to wrap this conversation up. Councilman Wu, do you have any further questions? Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions. You and someone who submitted a letter in support said that, like, this is for the safety of your kids. It's my understanding that the property is for sale.
I'm trying to, trying to sell it, but this is preventing it. So I mean, we're, I'm here. I'm there tonight. I'm sleeping there.
Okay.
Everybody that's looking at this house has kids.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to, you know, it's hard after she passes to stay there, and, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. If you could have a seat, please. And just for the audience watching at home, I would just like to draw everyone's attention to recommended action from the city. Item two, it says the block wall and electric driveway gate create environmental and safety concerns as the wall and electric driveway gate were constructed without permits. The wall and electric driveway gate were not plan-checked for building safety standards, and the location may impact drainage of the site, impacting public and private infrastructure. So that's obviously a concern as well. So is there any further discussion from the council regarding this item? No? No? Okay, thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this? I've got a motion to deny?
So for clarification, the recommended action, as it says, is to approve, approve the resolution which denies.
Which denies. Yes. So a yes vote denies. Right.
You have to approve. So going, it's sort of a, one does not the other. You have to.
So Councilman Pitts, you move the item? Okay.
Which is staff's recommendation.
Yes.
Move to approve the resolution as recommended by staff.
Second by Councilman Wu. Please vote. There it is.
So the motion to deny approves by four votes, 4-0.
Great, thank you very much. Our next hearing is the tentative parcel map 2024-127. Yes, yeah, I'll put it on you.
This has been, the applicant has requested that this item be continued for 30 days. So it will be heard on September 24th, if I'm not mistaken, will be our next meeting. So if we were to do that, we, the council, because it's already been publicly noticed, you have to vote to continue it at the request of the applicant. However, I know some people have come today, so it would be my recommendation, if anyone has come and wishes to speak to it today, they can, with the understanding that the council will not take action, nor will they discuss it today. It will be heard on the 24th, should the council approve the request of the applicant to continue it for 30 days. So in other words, if someone wants to speak, they can, but knowing that you, as a council, won't speak to it, nor would you take action on the request at this time. So I guess that would be the request, if anyone wants to speak. I do have, I guess I don't have anybody that has filed anything at this point.
We have no blue cards on this?
Not on this. This is item number four, the tentative parcel map.
Mayor Protam, can I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Steve?
So again, if you'd like to come and speak individually to the concerns, or you can speak today, or on the 24th of September. Even though I, I generally recommend if, if it's going to be continued. to speak the night they're actually going to decide. It has more weight. Now, if you're going on vacay and you can't be here, then, you know, throw in your two cents. So if that's the case, then the council would need to take action this evening to continue it for 30 days.
Councilwoman Miles has a question for staff.
Thank you. So first question is, will notices go out again to the residents?
No, it has been publicly noticed at this point pursuant to our city code, so that would stay as is.
Okay. And then second question is, which I guess now my answer is, because of the location of this property and the street that is the only thoroughfare for it, where it becomes very, very narrow, I wanted to see if we could add notices past the 500-foot limit to include the houses all the way down Mesa where it gets narrow.
That's entirely up to the council if they'd want to continue the item and with the direction that we also noticed further down the street. We can take care of that, Justin, we can do that.
And the gentleman in the back, would you like to come to the podium and speak?
Hi, Larry Hack, 19411 North Mesa Drive. And we have a property up against the easement for the proposed project. Myself, our address, 19409, and Steve Miller over here, we're all right there. And none of us got our letters in the mail. I went around on Estates Drive today and talked to four other houses, three of which got the letter. And so I would say if these letters were mailed out, I talked to Justin last week. He said they went out. Three of the people who are most impacted by this whole project got nothing. It was just dumb luck. I went to the city last week on something else and found out there was going to be this conversation tonight. So I think at least we need to get those letters again because they, nobody received them. And we are here to stand up and we can say that we did not receive those letters. So we do have some thoughts and concerns on this whole project, but we can table those till next month. Thank you.
If the council wishes, we can renotice and include further down the street as requested by Councilwoman Miles. If that's the direction of the council, we'll be happy to do it again.
Yes, I think we need to do that. Do we have any other questions of staff?
Well, not necessarily of staff, but what's the reason we're extending beyond our current 500, what is it, 500-foot?
500 feet.
Because of the fact that Mesa Drive is so narrow and many of the residents further down Mesa use that as a thoroughfare to get to and from their homes.
Because if, since I'm the one that made it, because if this project does go through eventually with four homes, and let's assume every, you know, home, you have like four cars. I have four cars. So that could impact the traffic significantly on a very narrow street. So I think it is important, especially, I think, isn't there a group home or something going in, a senior home going in over there as well? So I kind of think it would be fair to make sure that the residents down on Mesa further have an opportunity to hear about this and provide input.
Yeah. I don't see any harm in over noticing, certainly. So, yes.
How far would you wish us to go? How far do you want us to go further down? I think we'd have to extend in all directions because if you're going to do it, I don't think you'd want to say, well, we're just going to go down this street because they might be impacted or more. But there's potentially access from other areas that we could go the other direction. So I think if you want to extend it to 1,000 feet or whatever you want to do, we're happy to do it. But I would recommend that you do an entire area as opposed to target a street.
No, I agree. I would, and going both directions is fantastic because like Mayor Potem said, I don't see any harm in over notifying people. But specifically, since that Mesa that goes all the way up to the corner of the horse property, Cannon, no, no, Loma. Up to Loma and then equally distance the other way, in my opinion.
If that's the wish of the council, we're happy to send that out.
I can.
No, I know, I just want direction from the council, clear that's how far you want to go.
Okay. Any further discussion from council regarding the continuance or the noticing? Okay. Can I have a motion and can you please state the motion?
So real quickly, we will notice the residents. We will not publicly send notices to the register, et cetera, like we typically do of a public hearing. So this is a notice to the owners of those specific residences?
Yes. So I'll make the motion to continue this to the September 24th meeting and renotice the original homeowners and extend it out to the designated areas up to Loma and Mesa and then the opposite direction.
We'll just take a swath, a circular swath, consistent with the distance that that would be.
Perfect, thank you.
Does that make sense, Justin? We'll go on just maps and.
Can I have a second?
Passes by a 3 to 1, 3-0-1 with one abstention and one absentee. So it passes.
Thank you. Our next hearing is the adoption of Resolution 2024-3609 authorizing revised Orange County Sheriff Department vehicle impound fees. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. On June 25th of this year, thank you, Justin. On June 25th of this year, the Orange County Board of Supervisors adopted revised fee schedule for Traffic Violator Apprehension Program. And basically what that does is cars are impounded, removed or impounded, or the release of storage of vehicles. It goes from 144 to 174. They were last adopted in 2020, the last change. These are fees that are recommended for cost recovery, I believe, by the sheriff coroner. They sent us a notice, which I believe was attached. So by resolution, we would adopt their fee schedule. These revenues go directly to the Orange County Sheriff Department. We do not receive revenues from them. But it's a uniform schedule that they apply across all their contract cities. So we would recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions on this? Okay, is there anyone to speak on this item?
No.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second. Second, Councilman Pitts, please vote.
Passes by a 4-0-1 vote.
4-0-1?
Absent.
Oh, sorry.
Just to account for the five.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from number six to 11 that you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
We do have a public member that requested item number 11.
Okay, should we remove that from consent?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we then, I would like a motion to approve items six through 10 on the consent calendar. Second. Okay, please vote.
Passes by a 4-0 vote, 4-0-1.
And now I have agenda item 11 pulled from the consent calendar. So if we can go to item number 11, Steve?
Yes. Item number 11 has two items, the two people that spoke for it. Item number 11, you recall in our last meeting, we adopted, you adopted a strategy or approach to deal with sober living or group homes, I guess is what we decided to refer to it. And one of the actions in there was that we adopt, the council formally adopt a resolution supporting restoration of local control, local regulatory control over homes, of group homes, and to forward that adopted resolution to the delegation Sacramento, et cetera. So this is an adherence with that direction. So we have constructed a resolution that recommends that the city council overwhelmingly support the restoration of local regulatory control over group homes and municipal entities and strongly encourage legislators to take action, to pass legislation revising state law accordingly with utmost priority. So that would be a resolution that would be then, if it's approved this evening, would be transmitted to our delegation accordingly.
Great. So we have public comment on this?
Jasmine, I'm not going to pronounce, because I can't read, Paley? Is it Paley?
Polly.
Polly, sorry, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Jasmine Polly. I grew up in Villa Park. Moved here when I was 10 years old after my father retired from the Air Force. Love living in Villa Park. I returned here after a decade and a half stint in Los Angeles after college. So pleased to be back here in Villa Park in my own little house that I have over on Adams Ranch. I love so many things, the flowers and that everyone keeps their yard up and that it's such a nice area. Living over by that elementary school. And I understand that this was probably discussed quite a bit. And I doubt that I in any way dissent from anyone on the council or prior commentary. I didn't take the time to watch the video in full. I was unavailable for the July council meeting. But I just want to encourage and I appreciate that you've put forward that resolution. Specifically with item 2C, I would appreciate in the feeder or some sort of continued correspondence with your individual advocacy efforts with the legislature. I think that, you know, it's one thing to put a resolution forward and I appreciate you having the task force. But I would appreciate like individual and collective advocacy, your communication going forward for the city to kind of follow along. And I would also appreciate with item four, you've encouraging the residents to aggressively report. And I think that that's wise and thank you guys for including that. And thank you to the sheriff's department for continued monitoring of our area. And I would appreciate any efforts to keep this, the Villa Park that I so lovingly moved back to and not the Los Angeles that I left. I love being able to go for walks at, you know, a little bit past sunset and not have to really think about my safety. So everything that we can do to continue to preserve Villa Park and its unique, highly desirable area that it is, I appreciate. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Scott. I'm going to.
Brophy?
Well, here we are again, addressing the sober living situation. First off, I'd like to acknowledge Councilwoman Miles's input in trying to help avoid the sober living within the city. So thank you. The rest of the council have did give input regarding their, you know, their thoughts of the situation. What I have a problem with over this whole situation, and we, unfortunately, Steve has let us know that we pretty much don't have any jurisdiction over this, which is a farce in itself because we spent, I've been here, this is the third one that I've been to. And we spent 45 minutes talking about hedge height and lights and everything else. But to me, this is more important of our home values, our safety of our children, walking by these, this home. But when I was looking at the vote up top, Mayor Rosellini said, you need to, you know, you need to talk to your senators, your all this thing. How come we don't have any support from the city council or the city on the website of who to contact when you're concerned about these things? Why is it the community's job to find out who they should be talking to? Or who they can send a letter to or their disapproval? I don't understand it. We've gotten, we're three weeks into, or this is the third meeting that we've been talking about this. I don't think there's been any resolution. I see on the paperwork that now there's a task force that's going to be maybe looking into it. But I don't see anything moving forward other than the mayor and the rest of the council saying, do this, do that. But there's nothing. If you guys honestly are against this thing, and I believe you are, you don't want it in your, in our city. But if you honestly believe that we don't want this, make the other residents even aware of it. See, I think, you know, a lot of the people that here, that have been here, it affects them directly because we're close to it. It's easy for, I think somebody made a reference of 6,000 homes, 6,000 people, I don't know what it was in the city of Villa Park. I bet you probably 95% of this, rest of the city don't even know about this. Why aren't we making them aware of it? A letter from the council, the city. I understand our hands are tied. Let's reach out to the rest of the residents. Make them aware of this problem. Because where there's one, there's coming two, there's coming five. Steve said Fountain Valley's got 52 of these nightmares. Let's do what we can, make the city aware of it. Thank you, Sheriff. I think you're doing a great job. Your representation of your team here, they've done great work. They got a lot coming if they get this sober house coming to our city. They're going to be busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am also back, Lawrence Talibey, 17851 Lincoln Street. I just wanted to say first off, I saw my name on a task force that was created and I'm happy to be on it. And I'm happy to support this whole process moving forward. And I think it's going to be good for the city of Villa Park. As Jasmine said earlier, I've already said it, but I'll say it again. I'm new to Villa Park. I live next door in Anaheim Hills forever and ever because my family could never figure out a way to get over here. And I came from Anaheim and somehow found my way over here, praise God. And I'm very happy to be here. I went to Orange Lutheran and Villa Park has always had the reputation for being the place everyone wants to go with no streetlights and it's super private and all the nice people live there. And I think that's true. And I'm going to do everything I can to support this process moving forward. And it is very frustrating and it is disappointing, especially because I live right next door and I have two little girls. And the safety concern is real. I don't believe that fear mongering is going to make anything better. But there must be some sort of resolution that we can come across eventually for the long haul. I've kicked around weird ideas. I know Mr. Pitts was kind enough to kick that back and forth with me, I think like two weeks ago, where I came up with an idea that, oh, well, maybe if we had a way, we could somehow develop an ordinance or some kind of law where people can't use their home as a source of revenue. And maybe we could somehow create protections for ourselves as a city. So like, for example, Airbnb's must fall under some, or don't fall under, a certain legal protection, like fair housing. And so maybe there's a way we get around that with them. Obviously, using and operating your house as an LLC, maybe because you have a different business paying that, that would be excluded. But perhaps that would, there's something there, maybe there isn't. But probably because there's the protections and there's certain ways that we could decide which businesses can operate in a residential zone. Maybe that's something that we could look at sometime down the road. But my good old pal over here, Mr. Senior at Villa Park High School, Alex insisted that I come up and recognize and acknowledge the effort that's been put forth by not only the residents here, but the council. So thank you, council, for your effort. I appreciate it, I support it. And I am also happy to participate in any capacity. And I am also happy to participate in any capacity that I can to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan Keely.
Good evening. My name is Jan Keely. I filled out the card. I just forgot to give it to them. I'm here also to speak to the Resolution 11. And everybody who spoke already about it, thank you because you basically said what I had to say, okay? But more importantly, I am very happy that the resolution is put in place. I'm very happy that we're gonna do it, and I do not believe that there is such a thing that we have no control at all. Maybe we just haven't figured out what that control is. But I want to bring to the attention to everyone, as I start talking to people on my street and some other people, they had no idea about sober living housing. They have no idea that it's even happening. So if we bring, thank you for bringing this up because to me, it's a big thing. If you don't know, you just don't know. So if we bring up the attention of the residents, we can probably have not a wave. We can have a tsunami of people saying that we gotta do something about it. And maybe people up in Sacramento will wake up, understand that they don't live in a bubble. We live in the city and we deal with it, not them. So the more awareness we can bring to the public that it's happening, the more support we will get from them to help us to help everyone in the city. Because it is truly a safety concern. I lived in Irvine almost 40 years. In last month, there was a murder in one of those houses, and we didn't need to have that in Villa Park. I moved this. This is wonderful, beautiful community. This is the place that I, God willing, I will end up finishing my days here. And I wanted to continue to be as good as it is now and not going down the hill. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that all the public comment? Okay, and let's see.
So we need a motion and an action.
Well, first, council members, do you have any discussion regarding this item?
I just wanna, if council's in agreement, I really like the idea of making sure that the website has the contact of our, both state and federal representatives, if that's something that the council...
So our state and local delegation are all listed on there, but we can certainly highlight it in a different way. But it is for, for reference, it is listed on our website.
Fantastic.
It's not specifically identified for this issue, so we can, we can change that reference.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comment?
I would just like to highlight the fact that last month I did state that Assemblymember Diane Dixon had a joint legislative audit committee request from the State of California Department of Healthcare Services. And that included the licensing regulation oversight of sober living homes. And we published that in the feeder last month and had a link so that you could go and give input directly to the state for this task force. So we can check to see if that's still active and if they're still taking comments, and if it is, we'll repost it in the feeder as well. So.
Well, and on that note, you know, I know we don't have like thousands of followings, but, and I'm sure that several council members have, have posted stuff on their social media. But I had a, probably like a minute and a half, two-minute video that I had put out that talked about what was going on, so I can do that again.
Yes. Yes. Now, because we do all empathize with the situation throughout the city because obviously this home is not the first home we've had. So throughout the city, we understand that this is an issue. Okay, if there's no further discussion, can I have a motion on this item? So moved. Councilwoman Miles, second. Councilmember Wu, please vote.
Passes by a 4-0-1 vote.
Thank you very much. So now we're on to new business. Our first item of new business is the East Saravilla Rehabilitation Project. Staff, please give the staff report.
Yes, the state requires that we do on two years a local hazard mitigation plan. Every city is required to do this. In the past, we've used, we adopted a plan in 2021, and on a regular basis, we have to do it. They have completely changed. The state has changed the process of, not changed the process, but changed the content that we have to do. So we had a... Oh, I'm on...
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I jumped an item.
Go to 12.
Sorry. All right, number 12 is the construction of a professional service agreement, low bid for movement forward on Saravilla Rehabilitation Project. That project item has about two inches of paperwork. It's an agreement with both the city of Orange and the agreements for the bid. So we are recommending, we approve the project specifications, authorizing the mayor to contract with the low bid, which is RJ Noble, $511,000. Execute agreement with onward engineering to do our engineering oversight and authorize the ex-agree, the agreement with the city of Orange to amend it. So it increased the dollar value to $157,000 from $100,000. And it just allows us to move some, move some monies from our capital improvements fund and gas tax fund to the Saravilla Rehab Project in our budget. So this is an action consistent with the actions approved in our budget. Sorry to have jumped an item.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Just one quick question. We've got everything covered in either grants, other funds, or budget.
Yes, that's what this, the final, the final action allows us to do. Number five authorized to appropriate the $87,000 cap improvements fund and $113 from gas tax special revenue fund. And then inter-fund transfer from our general fund of $30,000. So that allows us to take care of all the funding necessary to complete all the contract obligations that we're recommending.
Great. So can I have a motion on this? Thank you. Councilmember Pitts, second. Councilman Wu, please vote.
We've been talking about this for a long time.
Passes, yeah. So this is the one, you recall, that we had the plans done and the feds cut the funding, so we had to come back, and now we have the state funding for it. So we are moving forward on it, and this is a good thing for the city.
Great. Thank you so much. Our next item of new business is the approval of a professional services agreement with Engineering Solutions Services to update the approved local hazard mitigation plan.
So yes, as I previously mentioned, this is the item that we're required by state mandate to update on a three-year basis, I believe it is. So we, three to four-year basis. They change it every time, so you can't just simply copy and paste. You have to go ahead and do completely new forms, new processes and new evaluations. So we hire a firm that helps us do this at $32,000, and it's refunded by their general fund and a recommended approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
No, just a comment. So I remember this from back in '21, and I just want to say for the council, it's noted that they have new guidelines that's listed in here that Steve just didn't mention, that now they have to plan for, you know, climate, climate, what's the word I'm looking for? Climate issues. Changes, thank you, along with any mitigation, any mitigation factors for homeless populations that might be living on the street, which that was not part of it.
So even if you don't have things in that category, you have to respond in those categories. So that's the sort of thing. It becomes a cumbersome process that is, takes some time.
I just wanted to point out that it's not just a duplicative thing. They've added, the government has added new things that weren't present before, so government at its finest.
Great. Are there any other questions of staff? No. Can I have a motion on this item?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Passes by a 4-0-1.
Thank you so much. Our next item of new business is the approval of Resolution Number 2024-3605, establishing a group home task force. Staff, can you please give the staff report?
Thank you. You remember that in our last council meeting, we had a, the council approved a strategy. In that strategy included the development of a group home task force with each council member appointing two members to that. Going back to our city codes, our city codes requires that anything that we, any ad hoc committee or committee that we establish by the council has to be established by resolution. So at this point, we are coming back with the recommended name, names of the potential members, and we are coming back with the resolution enabling the establishment of that group home task force. So we are moving forward. Before we move forward on that, I did also want to indicate that consistent with the strategy that was recommended, I attended the California Sober Living and Recovery Task Force CASLR meeting that you directed me to participate in, and that was held Thursday, August 15th. Our next meeting is October 18th. We are the first paying member of that committee because they're establishing a 501(c)(3) to run this because it's, it's kind of going out of Mission Viejo's hands into a ACCOC is establishing that. So as part of that, it is a public meetings, so the agendas are public, but I attended it and they gave us an update. One of, we're one of the other two cities that, one of the cities that has sent in letters to both approve, to support AB 2081 and 2574 at the recommendation as part of the strategy. The mayor signed those letters shortly thereafter our last council meeting, and those were transmitted up to Sacramento to their respective committees. So we're trying to follow up as quickly and judicially as we can, but I wanted to let you know the, the overwhelming approach, or the atmosphere or vibe, as my kids would say, of the CASLR meeting was frustration. Every city is frustrated with this. This is not a Villa Park specific. Every city is frustrated with it. But they have very little reception from Orange County up in Sacramento. This is not something that's being welcomed in Sacramento as far as, you know, let's make some changes because Orange County wants it. So it's, it's a frustration that we hear, but I think there's a couple of things. So as we talked about, I know that Lawrence talked about it, subsequent to that meeting, one of the suggestions was we can't operate, we have a code in Villa Park that does not allow short-term rentals. So we have provided the resident owner of that place on Lincoln with the city code. It's difficult to actually enforce to find out what they have agreements with these patients or residents or whatever, but they now have the codes in their hand that show it's, and I talked to Todd about this, it is illegal to have a short-term rental under 30 days with the, anybody in Villa Park. So we have provided that information there. Now, enforcing that's a little more challenging because there's patient or whatever confidentiality, et cetera. But those are things that we are trying to continue to do every avenue pursue that we can. So we had our code enforcement officer serve notice to them. Again, shortly thereafter, I met on August 15th, so I think on the following Monday, they provided that notice to the owner, resident, or whoever was at the site. So, so the action today that's before you is to adopt the resolution that would formally establish a committee as required by our city code. And then to, there's 10 members of this group that are listed in the staff, I mean, in the staff agenda item. They're all listed as approval, and they would be recommended for a two-year term effective tomorrow, basically. The reason we're recommending a two-year because as, going to this CASLR meeting, I've found that some of these people have been involved several years in this, and it's not something that's, you know, it's not progressing. Somebody described it as a marathon, not a sprint. But I think we need to have some continuity on it, and allowing a two-year term will allow us to people to have some continuity and have some, not have to restart over if we have like a short term and somebody has to step off. So anyway, we recommend approval. These are the nominations, and they're identified by the respective council members. So we would recommend approval of that list. We have two speakers. I don't know if Jasmine wanted to speak again. You listed number 14 and as well, but it's up to you. Okay, fine. Okay. And then Lawrence wanted to speak, I believe, again. While he's coming up, this will be a public meeting. It's a Brown Act committee, so all meetings will have to advise and sort of educate these people because they cannot have side meetings of a majority, and there's certain Brown Act requirements that they have to. And it's, since it's established by the council, these meetings have to be publicly noticed, and they have to be open to the public. We have to record minutes, et cetera. So that's a process that we'll follow. Staff will make sure that's all taking place. But that's an education process that will have to work. Some of these people have participated in group meetings before. I don't know if some have because I'm not familiar, but we'll educate them and move them forward to make sure that we follow the rules of the thing. But any meeting that they have will have to be a public meeting, which we'll make sure that we publicly notice and get it out to everybody. So anyway, I apologize, Lawrence.
All good. I'm back again, again. All right. First, thank you for the opportunity to serve on the task force. I'm actually really looking forward to it because I care, and I live right next door. I'm obviously against the whole idea. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't make an effort to help serve these people that need the help. Ideally, we would love for all of these people to go to an inpatient location that is in a commercial or industrial area. But we understand courtesy of our wonderful lawmakers, what their protections are. So some of the things I've already done just to help support the committee and to support the city of Villa Park is just trying to get some residents together to inform them. As Scott was saying earlier, and some of the council, and Steve, you've mentioned that we need to do a better job of getting the information out there. So I've organized an email thread just to circulate information, good and bad, unfortunately, bad comes with everything, and current events. So I know the Irvine topic, I think Yan briefly mentioned earlier, that was a hot topic when that came out about a month or so ago. So just trying to get the residents involved, encourage some positive dialogue so that people can ask questions and bounce ideas off of each other, and then inform them of this forum so that they can come here and have conducive discussion. And I'm personally looking forward to working with the city and this council to help make things better and keep Villa Park the way it is. And maybe if we're lucky, we'll be able to walk it maybe just one step back, just to make it a little bit better. Because I'm sure Villa Park in a way used to be a little bit better than it is now, but it's still a wonderful place to be, and I plan to be here forever and ever. So I'm very excited, and I'm looking forward to collaborating, collaborating with the residents as well. My favorite thing to do is to hang out and talk to the neighbors because we have such wonderful people that live here that care, and it's nice to know that it's not just me. So thank you very much. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. So council members, do you have any questions for staff or any comments?
I have a comment that, thank you for thinking about the short-term rental avenue because I was wondering about that myself when Lawrence had mentioned it. So since we don't allow short-term rentals, you know, again, the enforcement, but yeah, that'd be fantastic if we can somehow figure out how to make sure that this group home, sober living home, since they probably don't stay for more than 30 days, maybe that does fall under that category. So I appreciate the forward thinking of that.
Mayor Proten. Steve and I talked about this this afternoon, so I, I talked to him a little bit about making sure that we set expectations for this group, that we give them some direction in terms of what we expect and how we want things to kind of go. And also have a little bit of organizational structure to it so that we can get, so we're getting something out of it quickly and together. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And I had the comment, is it possible for council to get the minutes of those meetings just automatically?
We will post those on our website, so it's not just, it'll be available, we, all of our committees, we post our minutes. So we would post public notices of the meetings on our website and also some reaction minutes. We won't have every comment in there, but, because it just is, but we also record them. So the recordings would also be available on the website in the link.
Yeah, but could council get those minutes just automatically sent?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, and to that note, Steve, couldn't you give an update of the meeting when you do your...
I think the, we've asked that the committee itself give their update on a quarterly basis. I think that was in the...
Yes, I believe it was.
I think it's in the...
Resolution.
Yeah, in the resolution.
And they show update activities either in writing or verbally these twice a year at regularly scheduled city council meetings. So the committee itself will do it, so it won't have to be done through a middleman or me. I don't want to misstate anything that they want to do, so they have direct access.
Great. Can I get a motion on this?
Mayor, could I say one thing?
Yes.
Just for clarity. So when the city manager, Steve, mentions the Brown Act, I'll probably show up at the first meeting and just sort of explain what it is. It's nothing to be afraid of. And secondly, just for the record, so the, the group would have absolutely no decision-making authority, and I say that for a good reason, right? Because governmental officials are governed by conflict of interest laws. Somebody said they live right next to the place. That's fine.
That's fine because you're a resident working group and those types of rules don't apply. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. The whole financial interest thing does not...
So it waives the Form 700. They don't have to complete a Form...
You don't have to do a Form 700 or any of that stuff.
It is a good thing. It's a good thing for those who have to fill it out.
No, it sounds like I'm actually, yeah.
So our goal would be to meet within the next couple of weeks. I don't have contact information on all of them, so if I could ask the council members, because apparently you do have contact information, if you could forward any information on their respective emails or cell numbers or something that we can get a reach them, because that's going to be my focus on the rest of this week is trying to get contact information and get information out and trying to set up our first meeting.
Great. So I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Wu. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Passes by a 401 vote.
Great, thank you. Now we will discuss the city manager report.
Thank you. This is our monthly report. The log is attached. Items are changed in red where there's action to be taken, so you can see we've done a few things, and I'll update it again, but if I can answer any specific questions, otherwise I'll just, the information's there for you to read.
Are there any questions?
No.
Nope. Okay.
So no votes required on that?
Yep. No action. Okay, our first item, a mayor and council member matters is to discuss the proposed e-bikes ad hoc committee. Staff, can you please give the staff report?
Thank you. This was requested at our last city council that Councilwoman Miles raised the issue of creating an e-bike ad hoc committee, and that, the focus would be, I'll let her speak to it, but real quickly, before we get, I just wanted to, and I had mentioned previously, and I should have mentioned my last item, we have set up an e-bike awareness, and I hope you guys will repeat this and put this on your website, we have set up e-bike awareness town hall meetings at both Saravilla and at Villa Park High School. Saravilla will be September 4th at 6:30 PM. Villa Park High School will be at nine, on the 11th of September at 6:00 PM. We're trying to get information out at the start of the school for parents, students, whoever else might be interested. So I just should have mentioned that last item, but anyway, I hope you all put that out, but, and that sort of is a good preface into what Councilwoman Miles was talking about in creating a committee, so it's her, the floor's hers.
Well, thank you. Okay, want to say thanks for getting this on the agenda. At first, I kind of thought since Mayor Rosini was not here, I thought maybe, you know, him being a safety expert, having spent many years in law enforcement, but seeing that we have our captain here, I feel it's really important that we don't delay this. It's an extremely important, hot issue, so hopefully the mayor will understand because we've got our own expert right here. So this proposed e-bike ad hoc committee, so for me, it's really important because this is a public safety issue and it's a public safety issue not only for our children, but also for residents who have to drive next to these children who are on the streets in these e-bikes. E-bikes and the safety of those who ride them have become a hot topic both here in our community and neighboring communities. This issue has been a topic of concern of mine and most recently with the grand jury as we heard the grand jury report last month. E-bikes are fun and convenient, but can be very dangerous as well. We do not have a city ordinance or a policy that covers e-bike usage, e-bike safety information, appropriate pathways for said e-bikes, or any general e-bike information or jurisdiction. I strongly believe that the safety of our residents, both big and small, require us to take action before someone gets really hurt. And the grand jury, I'm going to quote something from the grand jury report, "As e-bike sales have increased by almost 145% worldwide," and this is quoted from the World Economic Forum, "March 12, 2021, over the past two years, the regulation of their use does not seem to have kept up. Accidents and incidents with e-bikes are on the rise, as are complaints from citizens of Orange County about e-bike riders." So the purpose of proposing this and asking Mayor Protem Jones to join me in this is to make recommendations to attain a realistic and practical policies for the safety of e-bike users within the city of Villa Park by utilizing the input of key stakeholders from within the city. The recent Orange County Grand Jury Report highlighted an urgent need to have consistent ordinances for the regulation and enforcement of safe e-bike use in all cities, school districts, parks, and unincorporated areas. Currently, there are significant differences in policy across cities. It's not a one-size-fits-all issue. The recent surge in e-bike usage calls for more immediate action to strengthen city oversight of this issue. Accordingly, the Orange County Grand Jury Report determined that an investigation into e-bikes was needed to bring public awareness to the safe use of e-bikes and the importance of having city-relevant rules of the road in place. The proposed ad hoc committee could actively seek common sense rules for e-bikes to ensure their safe operation among conventional bicycles, pedestrians, and vehicles throughout the city Villa Park and our partner stakeholders like OUSD. The ad hoc committee could research, gather information, and incorporate best practices regarding e-bikes from cities that have already established city ordinances as it pertains to the safety of e-bike users. This e-bike ad hoc committee could be comprised of a representative both from Saravilla Middle School and Villa Park High School, Mayor Protem Jones, myself, resident Mrs. Patty Whitman who co-authored the 2023-2024 Grand Jury Report on e-bikes, Orange County Sheriff Deputy Sean McDermott, or a representative, and of course, city staff. So the meeting guidelines would be similar to any other ad hoc committee, and this is just proposed. It can obviously be changed if Mayor Protem Jones or the council would like, but to meet once a month until I have a sunset date of April 2026, or another pre-summer because 2025, summer of 2025, I imagine all the kids will be out on their e-bikes again, so we'd like to get something on the books prior to that summer. And the committee would report all findings to city staff to help provide direction and guidance to co-author an e-bike ordinance that could be presented to council for approval. I do not see that there would be any increase in expense or cost to the city as the ad hoc committee would do the quote legwork of compiling the data to present at their meetings so city staff could spend time elsewhere. If the council does not approve this proposal, then we need to come up with another idea tonight as this is too important to wait and too important to do nothing and too important to ignore. So I know I'd like to have the sheriff comment if he's willing and provide his thoughts as being the town expert both on what's going on in our city and e-bikes in general, and would love his input.
There, we get to use this one. Is there any other comments or any questions before I comment?
Right.
No? Well, I'm far from an expert on the matter. I'm sure Mayor Rosini would actually be able to speak more on it, but I do, I don't disagree that e-bikes are a big growing problem and they have been over the last couple of years, and we're catching up to it. I just don't know, I know we're addressing it in LEAC, at least it's a topic of discussion. I just don't know where the, and that's not my avenue, it's your guys' choice, where that topic of discussion needs to be held. I know we're getting ahead of this. We're putting a couple of the meetings together at the schools, so we're already going that route with Saravilla and the high school. We already got my deputies working on it. I just don't want to create, I don't want to tear the baby in half and have two people going in both directions when we should be concentrating on one mission. I completely agree, it is a problem and it's one of those ones that we're, it's like technology, we're figuring out as it grows ahead of us, right? So I don't know if that helps. I do agree it needs to be addressed. I just don't know where the appropriate forum would be, and I guess I leave that up to you.
Great, thank you so much. Steve, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No, we don't.
Okay. Todd, did you have something?
I just heard today in one of my cities that I think there are two pending bills, maybe, you know, in the state legislature about e-bikes, changing the class 1, 2, 3, blah, blah, blah. One lost in committee is out, but the other one progressed, I can't remember, do you know?
Yeah, I believe there's one still alive, but I don't know how far it goes and it's, everything's being amended up there now. There's a real, excuse me, a Kabuki dance going on up in Sacramento where they put bills and they change content and bills labeled one thing turn into another. So I can't tell you what it says as of now, but I know there's only one left.
Yes, and I know right now San Diego State, or San Jose State University is doing a study that is meant to inform legislation on this issue, so. Okay, so council members, do you have any discussion on this item? Councilman Wu?
Certainly, I understand this is a very important topic. It's very dangerous on the street. We all deal with it. We all see the teenagers riding. I do with, I do agree with our captain. Is there a need to separate the two issues and try to spread so thin? When I got this agenda, I was looking at this issue to create ad hoc committee. Personally, I believe we, as a city, already have a committee deal with public safety. That is the...
LEAC.
LEACs, thank you. I would think this is perfect for LEAC to continue to work on, and we already have all the law enforcement on there. We already have a council member to be on there. Why not just continue having LEAC to do their work? And also, there's a possibility to ask them to meet a bit more frequent since we need to catch up the current situation. That would be actually my proposal to get this into LEAC and have professionals to deal with and then come up with proper solution.
So I can answer the question about why not just give it back to LEAC? And I have spoken to the LEAC chair and his schedule really wouldn't warrant a monthly meeting. The purpose of the ad hoc is it's ad hoc, so it's got the sunset. It does not abide by the quote Brown Act rules from the point of view of since it would just be...
It would be, it would be a Brown Act. As you created, it would be.
I'm sorry, I mean, it wouldn't, since it's just us and we're not a majority of the council, and there's no other council members on it.
But the committee you create itself is a Brown Act committee.
So the ad hoc rules just, is exempt from the Brown Act if it's just members of the council. Once you add outside parties, then Brown Act kicks in.
Okay, so still Brown Act, sorry. Thought it was more just if it was just two versus three of it.
If it was just two of you, yeah, that bottom line, so, yeah.
So one is that if this passes, a mayor Protem is able to, meeting monthly to do this, and then also, I love the LEAC and I appreciate the LEAC, but I know that they're also looking at other issues, and this would be myopic on just e-bikes. I know that they're looking at the flock cameras, they're looking at other issues with, you know, license plate readers, the flock cameras, other things. So keeping it at LEAC, I feel this is too important and it's too much of an urgency to let it go every couple of months to meet along with, we would focus just on e-bikes and not have other issues that were equally as important. So that's the answer why I feel it would not be a problem to just take it away from LEAC.
Great. Captain, you had a question?
A question or a point of clarification, and given your background with the school district, is there something that the school districts are already doing that we would be, again, hindering what they're already working on? Because I do agree that getting the school districts involved is the smartest idea because they have way more administrative power to deal with this type of stuff. So are they doing something already?
Yes, the city schools committee has already had e-bikes on their agenda a couple of times.
Is that something that we can just be a part of rather than creating our own lane?
We could definitely speak to them about that.
Just a question.
Yeah. Councilman Pitts?
Yes, thank you. I agree that we need to do something and do it soon rather than later because I have seen some of the children out riding the bikes and misbehaving, in my opinion, but I, too, like Jordan, believe it ought to be left in the hands of the, you know, law enforcement people who have the knowledge and experience to address these deals. Right now, I don't know that we can do a whole lot other than education because we don't have the laws in place to support what they're doing, but I do believe that it really belongs in LEAC. We, two or three years ago, we tried very hard to reduce the number of ad hoc committees that we had because of the workload with Steve and staff. I realize Councilwoman Miles says, oh, it's not going to be that much, but at the same time, if it's a fully noticed meeting and all these other kinds of things, then there is additional work and stuff that will have to be done. So you already, all of us can attend LEAC, all of us can drive how and what they address on the committee. We don't have to say, oh, we're going to meet once a quarter. You can say, because you represent us, that they should meet more often and do the things that we asked of them to do. So I still believe that it belongs in LEAC. I don't believe in a separate committee is something we should be considering.
Thank you very much, Councilman Pitts. Steve, if I could ask, what would the cost be for a monthly ad hoc committee from now until April 2026?
I couldn't give you a number. I mean, it'd be publishing, the process would be publishing notices, doing the minutes, calling the meetings and reserving the rooms. I mean, and that's sort of then we post, the time posting it on the agenda, posting it on the website, the links to the minutes and the links to the recordings. And so I couldn't, I couldn't put a number on it. I don't know that it's significant, but I don't know.
What about if I changed it and said that it was just Mayor Protem and myself?
You can change however you want to. I mean, if you wouldn't have it a Brown Act, then you could meet.
Right, so then there wouldn't have to be anything agendized.
But I think the point, and maybe I'm missing something, is I thought that you had wanted to get input from others. If you get input from others, then you create a public meeting and you, you know, you kind of go back. So I kind of, you two can meet all you want to, I guess with no problem. But I guess the point was to try and get, if you want to get the deputy in the school district involved and have the public, you know, Patty Whitman involved, et cetera, that would be more of a public notice.
That was, that was the intent, but it appears that some of the council members are not interested in doing that, so I'm trying to come up with another solution.
No, I mean, in response, it's not onerous the time, but it is just another thing checkbox I have to do. It's just, I don't know what, I don't think it's a, you know, I don't think it's a lot of time or whatever, but it's just something else I have to remember to do.
What, real quick, Todd, what if Councilwoman Miles and I met just the two of us, but then we went to LEAC, being as LEAC has already been discussing e-bikes? And then it, we were able then to bring in the other community members that we wanted to reach at the LEAC meeting?
LEAC is an open public meeting, so anybody can attend LEAC. You two can meet and bring an item and bring recommendations to LEAC or whatever. We already have a public member who comes and talks about license plate readers to LEAC. You know, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
So he comes and he actually submits information to me that I transmit to LEAC and questions, and we've had, you know, a lot of input back and forth. It's open public meeting and you two could certainly do that.
Is Vince on LEAC?
Yes.
Well, then there's three of you, so you couldn't do it.
Both of you couldn't go, but one of you could go.
No, but Mayor Protem and I could meet to discuss and then Mayor Protem could take it because she is a member of the LEAC.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because, yes, I didn't have a little bit of the concern that the captain did about, you know, stepping on LEAC's toes, being as, you know, our last meeting, we did have e-bikes on the agenda and kind of spreading ourselves too thin, but being as LEAC doesn't meet very often, and actually, in reality, I wish we would meet more often, you know, being able to meet and bring the legislation and kind of do all that legwork ahead of time, I think would be really valuable because, you know, as Steve can attest, the last LEAC meeting, you know, the meeting went long.
It was a couple hour meeting, couple hour meeting.
Yeah, because, you know, we were talking about a lot of these issues and so we could kind of cut to the chase a little bit.
I'm happy if that's the compromise that has to happen because this is, you know, along the lines of the sober living homes, this is about our children, this is about our community, so I'm disappointed at some of the resistance, but if this is the pathway to make sure it happens, that's what I'm interested in.
So if you were to pursue that, you wouldn't need to take any action, right? The two of you just meet and then you come back to, one of you decides, hey, Steve, I want to be agendized at LEAC for this item and whatever, and so that's all it would take.
Mayor Protem and I could just meet.
Yeah, you could just meet now and there's no action required on number 16.
Yeah.
You just, you just decide that you're going to meet and figure out when, and you can do it today, tomorrow, yesterday, whatever, you know, whatever, and we set it up. And, you know, the other thing is, I mean, we can certainly request LEAC to meet special meetings, whatever you need to do. I mean, it isn't, you know, I recognize that the chair has a schedule that we try and work with, but, I mean, you know, that's all solved, the option of saying, well, can you guys meet extra meeting once in this month extra or something like that? You know, I mean, I don't know. That would have to be a discussion with him, but you could say, hey, could you have a special meeting just to discuss e-bikes? You could do something like that, you know? You could do it a lot of ways to bring it to them.
Well, and the chair doesn't have to go. You've got the vice chair, so.
Yes. Okay, so what do we need to do then on item number 16?
There's no action if that's the direction you want to proceed. No action required. With, if you're not creating a separate committee, you two are just doing it and you do it. That's, so there's no formal action required by the council?
No, that's correct. If you want there to be the...
I think you're probably better just to simply agree that that's what you're going to do.
Sure.
Without creating the... Yeah. So they give, I'm trying to give them the maximum freedom to do what you want to do without having to formalize something, so I don't...
I'm here if you need me.
You're here all night. Okay, fantastic. Yeah, because again, I have to say that this is not reinventing the will and this is not something that's, you know, super costly or anything. This is about protecting our children. Again, I'm going to publicly state, I'm really disappointed that I didn't have full council support, but I am happy to work with Mayor Pro Tem. So I will, if I have to pull the item or just say no, no action,
There's no action required.
Then I am good with that.
Move on to number 17.
If I would like to say though, I mean, it's not that I don't support the item. That's, this is, again, I feel council member Pitts and I are being painted as we don't care for the item. That's not the issue at all. This is not that. We both agreed e-bike is a dangerous device on the street. We agree it is dangerous to the children, to all of us. Young, old, fit, not fit. You know, people enjoy just having a good ride. I'm just trying to be using our time efficiently and also utilizing what our current committee is set up to do. So please do not take that as I disagree to have a committee or I disagree this is an important topic. That is, did not come out of my words, I mean, my mouth. I believe it is incredibly important because it can save lives and, you know, really teach the young ones to ride it safely. I'm happy to see that we have CV and Villa Park High School going to do something, awareness for our young children. I'm very sure I will participate in that also. I do have teenagers at home. So again, I don't appreciate being painted as, I don't want this, you know, important topic to discuss. I'm just asking to be discussed in the different, in the existing committee.
Great, thank you so much, Councilmember Wu. Now it is time for council member meeting attendance reports, starting with Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Councilwoman Miles.
Thank you. The board met Thursday, August 15th. Some notable points, increased Dengue travel-related human cases. The district continues to see increased travel-related cases. These cases are investigated and if warranted, control efforts are conducted. There is increased mosquito activity in Orange County. As the weather continues to warm up, mosquito activity in both our West Nile virus mosquitoes and the 80s mosquitoes is increasing. Don't forget that heartworm is also on the rise. So when you take your dog to the vet and they ask if you want to do a heartworm test, highly recommend that does happen because heartworm is transmitted between animals via the mosquito. We all love our pets. The best way for residents to protect themselves is to wear EPA registered repellent. Check their property for any water sources and talk to your neighbors if you think that there might be a breeding source at one of those locations. If you don't want to approach a neighbor, you can always reach out to me. I'm happy to ask the inspector to come. She's fantastic and she has no problem walking up to the door. The current mosquito count numbers as of August 15th, which this is again, the day of our meeting. There are 15 West Nile virus positive mosquito pools, one West Nile virus positive dead bird. There are zero human infections as of the 15th. There are 18 Dengue travel-related infections and two Zika travel-related infections. And we had a report on the Americas, so it's not just North America but South America. And it's really getting bad, especially in the South Americas with that Dengue. So hopefully, anyone that traveled to, you know, the southern portion of the Americas didn't get bit by a mosquito. If you have concerns, talk to your doctor. And that is, oh, and the last thing, actually. So I think I've told you guys that the board is really highly competitive about a campaign. So there's the information officer who, you know, tries to push out all this stuff, the marketing and the social media and whatnot. And then you'll see the magnets on the trucks or you'll see billboards or it goes in the feeder. And so of all 34 cities, there's a highly competitive group of people. And so we've won the award in the past where it's whoever, there's all these metrics. And if the city who does all of it, from the billboard to the social media to truck magnets, everything, then they get recognized. And it's just, in the boardroom, it's just an honor to have it. So we are currently tied for the top with Seal Beach. And I do have to say, it got so competitive that they did break it up into large cities and small cities because we don't have 15 billboards like Acosta Mesa does or whatever. So I did appreciate that. So for the small cities, which still has about 13 or 14 cities in it, we are tied for first place with Seal Beach. So Nathan Steele and I eye each other through the whole entire meeting and I push out social media and I, you know, I think the city staff did a great job because I'll text Steve and I'll say, you know, oh my gosh, there's something. Can you put it in the feeder right now? And tag McQuell. So hopefully, we'll find out at the meeting coming up who won. So we'll get presented with a plaque again. That's it.
Great, thank you so much. Orange County Sanitation District, Councilman Pitts.
The Administrative Committee was dark this month, but we have a board meeting tomorrow night.
Thank you so much. Orange County Fire Authority, the mayor is out, so no report. Orange County Library Advisory Board, Councilman Wu.
No meeting this month, but I would like to give a public announcement for our Villa Park Library. Back-to-school events, they are doing September 7th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And again, Thursday, September 12th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. All the students are welcome, K-12, whoever visit would have opportunity for opportunity drawing. And the bilingual Spanish storytime would begin weekly starting Wednesday, September 11th at 3:30. Another event that the librarian would like me to really encourage our residents to participate would be the Author DC Force Event. That will be Saturday, September 21st at 2:00 p.m. Right here in the library. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Orange Unified School District City Schools Committing Committee, that's me. There was no meeting, however, schools started last week, so please be extra careful when driving around our schools. I'd like to give thanks to the Sheriff's Department for providing some extra traffic enforcement around our schools to kind of get parents in those good habits. And then, as we've stated before, please look for this flyer in the feeder. It's the e-bike awareness public meetings. And I'll just say the days and times again. Wednesday, September 4th at 6:30 p.m. at Saravilla Middle School and Wednesday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. at Villa Park High School. So please mark your calendars for those. And big thanks to the Orange Unified School District and the Orange County Sheriff's Department for collaborating with us on these important events. Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, there was no meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation, we did have a meeting on July 24th. And thank you to everyone who came out for Symphony on the Go. It was a collaboration with the Villa Park Women's League and we thank them so much for that. It was a wonderful event and thank you to Rockwells and the Post for bringing out food for sale and everyone had dinner and listened to the beautiful music. And it really was a terrific community event. I would also like to give another plug this month to the Villa Park Picnic. That is going to be on August 31st in the Saravilla Middle School Amphitheater. It's starting at 5:00 p.m. with food trucks and carnival games. And then the concert will begin at 6:30 with Paperback Writer, a Beatles cover band. And we will also have students giving a Taekwondo demonstration during the band's break. So it'll be really great. School has started, so please bring out the entire family for this great community event. Now on to Housing Legislative Committee, Councilwoman Miles.
No meeting.
Now the Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory Committee.
So Bridges at Kramer Place, we actually finally approved the bylaws. We had to make some minor adjustments, so we finally approved those. Those should go, and they're now back at council. Our next meeting, we should have the actual completely stamp of approval. It went through our committee and then those should be effective come January. So that's it for that, but we're done as far as our part. And there was complete unanimous consent and agreement on the proposed changes that we made. So looking forward to that.
If I could just ask a question, was part of those changes allowing alternates?
Yes.
Okay, so then Steve, would we need to then appoint an alternate?
Well, that's what we're, yeah, so they're gonna, I believe they're gonna hear. Well, it had to go through council, county council. But we had guidance, we had a representative from council on the board kind of helping make sure that we, you know, did stuff. And then once we approved it, council takes it back. And so when they do the stamp of approval, which should be before our next meeting because we meet quarterly, and then, yes, it is alternates. That was one of the big things, is we didn't have alternates. So when people didn't show up, we couldn't vote if we didn't have a quorum. So we will, hopefully by January, when it comes time for new committees, be able to appoint an alternate.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And then the Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission.
So we met on Friday, August 9th, and we heard from Eric Ensley, from the Office of Veterans Affairs. And there's a very good presentation, just a PowerPoint slide that people can go through that I've sent to the city and hopefully they can put the link on in the feeder. But basically, in a nutshell, veterans can access a comprehensive suite of benefits to support their health, education, housing and financial well-being. The Orange County Veterans Service Office, which is located at, was it 1300 South Grand? It's at the county offices. The veterans maximize these benefits, whether dealing with healthcare, disability claims or education. The Veterans Service Office provides indispensable support in navigating the veteran system. And then you can visit the Veterans Service Office website at veterans.ogov.com or call 714-480-6555. And also, what a lot of people don't realize is that family members of veterans can be eligible for some of those benefits as well. So if you're not sure, you can call them. They're very easy to work with and they'll let you know right away if you, what services you're eligible for. And it's great, there's a lot of people that walk out of there much improved than when they walked in.
Thank you very much. Now we will hear individual council member information items or announcements, starting with Councilmember Pitts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First event was August 1st. I attended the OC Fair Day for elected officials. That was really fun and nice to see all of our peers there. And I had a huge crowd. I was surprised how many people were there. August 6th was National Night Out. I'd like to thank my wife, Elizabeth, for continuing the annual tradition of feeding our first responders with the help of Catherine McBride, unless she's sitting in the audience, Carolyn Riker, Kathy Curtis and Deanna Fasenelli. It was amazing dinner for the first responders that they cooked that night, so thank you. I too attended the, on August 15th, the Sober Living Task Force. I did it remotely. I got to watch Steve, he was squirming in his chair, but I was watching him the whole time. On August 17th, Elizabeth and I attended Home to Table Dinner Event, benefiting the Orange Homegrown Group. August 22nd, attended a Young Kim for reelection reception here in Villa Park. And on August 31st, attended concert in the park.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Councilwoman Miles?
Thank you. So August 1st, the ACCOC Summer Legislative Roundtable and Reception was held at Wild Rivers. As a board member, I was able to bring my entire family, so that was kind of a fun day. But during the evening, it was an outstanding event with Orange County leaders and members of our state delegation. And trust me, Sober Living Homes came up and was able to speak with all of them about that. They came together to build collaborative partnerships and delve into conversations on critical issues. It was hosted by Wild Rivers ACCOC members and their families. I want to thank Senator Josh Newman, Senator Janet Nguyen, Assemblymember Diane Dixon, Assemblymember Cadi Petri-Norris and Assemblymember Sharon Cork Silva for their participation and commitment to furthering the city-state partnerships, entertaining my lengthy dialogues about public safety and sober living homes as well as all the sponsors and attendees. On August 6th, I also attended the National Night Out. It's a great event, been every year. Really love the partnership that the city has with the community and the law enforcements. The Symphony on the Go, I was only able to go for a very brief moment of time because we were leaving for a family reunion shortly after. But I have to say, I smelled the wonderful food that I think Rockwells had a barbecue out there, which was amazing. So I'm sorry, I wasn't able to stay the entire evening. Thursday, August 22nd, the League of California Cities, Orange County Division, had a meeting and board election. We heard from Philip Frank, CEO of BeWell OC. We had a chance to go visit one of the campuses at BeWell OC in Orange and they were building a new one, very large one, in Irvine. And we got the update on how BeWell OC partners with cities to address mental health and substance abuse challenges along with an update to the BeWell campus. And this is really exciting because there's going to be a big emphasis on older adults. And they're doing a section completely dedicated to older adults, helping older adults, adult daycare, caregiving support. So this is going to be something that, as the vice chair of Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission, we are trying to get our county, we found out that when we had traveled up, the chair and I, up to San Jose, that we are so behind the times from San Diego County, LA County, northern counties, about Orange County being an age-friendly county. So we are, we have meetings set with the supervisors to discuss what needs to happen or the start, what needs to start happening in order to make Orange County age-friendly again. So we did have the elections for the new 24, 25, 20, 24, 20, 25 board. Dave Schauer was voting as president. First vice, he's from Stanton. First vice president was David Penalosa from Santa Ana. Second vice president was Blair Stewart from Brea. State Director, John Taylor from San Juan Capistrano. Large city, this is held by three seats, Fred Jung from Fullerton, Trish Kelly from Mission Viejo and Tammy Kim from Irvine. The first district representative is Debbie Baker from La Palma and then Nathan Steele from Seal Beach. Second district was Tyvette Phan from Santa Ana. Third district was Scott Voits from Lake Forest. Fourth district was Rose Espinoza. And fifth district was Victor Cabral from San Clemente. So the last thing is, I think I mentioned last time about the Villa Park Little League 10-U All-Star Team. And they made it all the way to the state championships. They're not old enough to go to the Little League World Series in Williamsport. Those are only for the 12-U. But our little 10-U team made it all the way up as far as they can go, up to the state. And they ended up coming in second to none other than Elisa Viejo, which is always funny, you'll go to these big events and you end up playing somebody that's just literally 10, 15 miles away from you. But huge kudos to them. They played their hearts out, they were the underdog. And to have Villa Park achieve, sorry, second place, but fantastic for the state championships for our district is, for the state coming from our district is amazing. So good, big congratulations to them and their coaches and the families. And that's it.
Great, thank you so much. Councilman Wu?
I think I also attended the National Night Out. That was always a cool event to attend. Really special thanks to Elizabeth and Robbie for the well, opening up your home for Young Kim and all the residents. That was a fantastic event, I really appreciate it. And school is back, so I urge all the residents, please have a little bit more patience around school. Really look out for other students, pedestrians and also each other as Fox Car goes. Maybe you need to leave your house just a little bit earlier since it's only the first week. I know all the new parents are probably still trying to figure out the new route to get to school as early as, or as fast as possible and as safe as possible. So please look out for everybody's safety. Again, please attend the foundation's picnic in a park, the Saturday event. And also, again, the library hosting the author event on September 21st at 2:00. That's a Saturday, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. So on to my report. As I mentioned earlier, I attended Symphony on the Go. Again, thank you Villa Park Women's League and the foundation for that. I also enjoyed attending National Night Out on August 6th, which was a great event that promotes our police-community partnerships. And then I also participated in the Bluff Drive. And then I also participated in the Bluff Drive, sponsored by the city of Villa Park. And it was amazing to see so many of our city staff participating in this very valuable event. So thank you to our city staff for putting all of that together. Now we will adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P.M. Thank you for participating this evening, and have a good evening and stay safe.